Great. Welcome to the September 11th, 2024 meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copley.
Present.
Commissioner Gagné.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Thank you to the following staff for being present tonight. Ian Lefcourt, Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, and Chip Cornwell. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's approved. And then I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 24th and July 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Great. All right, now it's time for us to hear public comment and items from the audience. I just want to remind people since we're in election season that this is not the right forum for any sort of public comment in support or opposition to ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. And then with that in mind, we can start our public comment.
We have one community member who has signed up. That is David M.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond, 98053. This evening's presentation on the 2025 code package shows there are several items moving into Chapter 2105, Special Districts. Among these items is Section 300, Southeast Redmond Industrial District, which is a new section of code. The Southeast Redmond Industrial District consists of areas zoned as manufacturing park and industrial, as shown on Redmond's zoning map. By selecting the zoning and Cara layers in Redmond's property viewer, we see that the industrial zone lies almost entirely in Redmond's Cara 1. Land uses or activities that pose hazards to the city's groundwater resources are prohibited in Cara 1. These hazards result from storing, handling, treating, using, producing, recycling, or disposing of hazardous materials or other deleterious substances. Redmond's Economic Development Strategic Plan aims to attract life science, clean technology, space, and aerospace industries to the Southeast Redmond Industrial District. While these industries may have high value for Redmond's economy, the city should not ignore the potential groundwater contamination hazards posed by these industries. Life science industries, particularly pharmaceutical companies, can release pharmaceutical residues into groundwater aquifers. The aerospace industry has a long history of groundwater contamination. And despite the environmentally friendly intent of clean tech, such industries can inadvertently contribute to groundwater pollution. Here's how. First, solar energy. Manufacturing solar panels can involve hazardous chemicals like cadmium, lead, and arsenic that can contaminate groundwater during production or disposal of panels. Second, some bioenergy production systems may produce waste byproducts. Runoff from facilities or storage sites can cause groundwater pollution. Third, battery storage. Metals like lead, lithium, and nickel could leach into groundwater. And fourth, geothermal energy requires drilling into the earth, which can allow harmful chemicals like arsenic to enter groundwater systems. So while clean tech seeks to reduce environmental damage, there are risks if proper safeguards are not in place. These risks usually arise from the production, disposal, or industrial activities that support clean tech industries rather than the technologies themselves. Strong regulations and practices are necessary to mitigate unintended groundwater contamination. In conclusion, strong regulations are needed in the new code regarding the Southeast Redmond Industrial District. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everyone who signed up to speak.
Lovely. All right, in that case, we are going to start our study session on the 2025 code package for Redmond 2050. I'd like to introduce Becky Frye and Kim Dietz.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kim Dietz and I are here tonight to give you just an overview, and we'll start going through this as soon as I can get my screen shared. Team is being a little awkward for me. So we have very high level introduced at previous planning commission meetings. This evening's going to start a slightly deeper level. Some of the slides will be a repeat, but just to keep everything together. The focus of this evening's study session is really to introduce the actual structural changes, not the content of the change itself, but how we're reorganizing and simplifying and making it easier for people to find and use the zoning code. And so that's what we'll be reviewing this evening. The next piece of this will be at your next meeting. We'll start going into the zoning and uses and start going a little bit deeper actually into the changes. Again, for streamlining and restructuring, the modernization of our code is being continued. Lots of simplification, a lot of just making it easier for people to use, again, both internally and externally, from a structural standpoint, but also wording. And Kim Dietz has done a lot of working with staff on teaching them how to write code that is accessible to people in simple formats. And so that is actually moving forward as well. And also, we're transitioning to use of more tables and illustrations again, just to try to make it easier. The goal of this package from a streamlining perspective is, yes, we're continuing to do code updates that will continue after Redmond 2050, but the bulk of the reorganization that requires moving parts from one part of the code to another, we're trying to capture that in this 2025 adoption package. There is at least one exception that we know of, just because we can't get to it because of workforce limitations. But we are hoping that by getting most of the moving parts done in this package, moving forward, it'll be a lot easier for the community to follow along with edits that will be just in-place edits instead of an edit and a move, which has been a lot of the work that we've been doing this year and will continue in this package. So here's just from a context standpoint, all of the work that we're doing and adopting that'll go into effect in January 1, all the pieces that are required, all the pieces that are just really getting into Overlake, all those things that we knew, that we wanted to do. That is all with council right now. They're working through their final study sessions for adoption, November 19th and effective January 1. The 2025 code package is going to go forward to the planning commission for the end of this year. We'll do study sessions and public hearings. By the end of the year, all things will get through public hearing, and then council adoption will be in spring. But there will be work moving forward. So just wanted to be clear that we're not capturing everything. There is limited resources. So there are some things that will continue after the work is completed here. But this package will complete Redmond 2050. So the periodic review pieces will complete Redmond 2050. All of the work in the future will just fall under the Redmond zoning code rewrite work. So just diving right in, and feel free to jump in whenever you feel the need to. Article 1 is going to be reworked quite a bit because we're deleting so many zones. So the zoning consolidation is having a pretty significant impact, but also the uses. So there's a couple of things that are happening here that are involving name changes to make sure that as we delete things, the chapter name makes sense. For instance, the commercial zones, it's going to be just BP, MP, and I. Right now, there's a lot of design districts in there. Those are going away. So just trying to create some simplification there. We are adding to 2104 into the title lane uses and not just general provisions. Again, trying to make it easier. People know all the use regulations are under there. So there are a number of things that we're doing from a renaming perspective. Those are shown in here in green. There are some things that are basically just essentially moves that we're just showing in blue. So we're creating a new Chapter 2115. It is urban recreation, RE5, and currently our Bear Creek Design District Number 2. That's going to get renamed to Conservation Open Space. And those three are going to create our 2115 Conservation Recreation Zones. So we're grouping things together, right, and trying to make it to where each chapter has a cohesive grouping. And that means that 2108 is going to see significant changes between moving uses out and removing zones. All that's going to be left are neighborhood zones and our mixed-use zones, and so we're re-titling it from residential regulations to neighborhood mixed-use zones. Again, just to be pretty straightforward of what actually is in that chapter. Everything that you see in yellow means we're doing some edits. There is actually quite a bit of edits happening in here. Downtown and Marymore are seeing a good, significant rewriting. We're consolidating the zones, but also updating the standards, adopting TOD focus areas and a whole bunch of other things that are going to be reflected in that. Also, we're moving some things into 2105. So our special districts that's being created here in 2024 is being expanded. We're adding the TOD focus areas, also the Marymore Cultural District, and all overlays and special districts, all of them. They're just all going to be moved. So they're going to be a little bit easier to find. Right now, some of them surprise people after the fact. Even some newer staff aren't aware of some of the overlays. And so this just makes it really easy for people to do. So a lot of moving parts, some edits, some significant edits in some cases. And so we'll walk through all of those as we go. But essentially, Article 1 is going to be a series of chapters that groups zones, and that should make it a little bit easier. And then all uses are going to 2104, and that'll also make some of the chapters a little bit easier. So Article 2 then becomes site and project planning chapters, article, right? So all of those things that are going to be helping you to actually do your layouts, trying to figure out all of the requirements you would need to plan for, all of that is now going to be in Article 2. So what that means is Article 2116, which is currently in Article 1, is going to be just have a new label. That actually isn't moving, but it will now be considered under Article 2 instead of Article 1, just to keep those citywide regulations together. There are a number of pieces and parts that are moving into 2116 because there are a lot of things related to site planning that are scattered, a bunch of them in 2108. There's a couple of things that are duplicate, exactly duplicate, same exact illustration. By moving everything site planning related, all measurement type of conversations all into one spot, that allows us to also do some streamlining and updating. There are some edits that are happening. You'll see some yellow in here, but for the most part, the changes in Article 2 are going to be related to 2116 and the streamlining of all of that. We're moving all of the incentive-related conversations that aren't affordable housing or green building are going to create a new Chapter 2155. And so that is going to be where we take the Overlake incentives and take that format, that menu of options format, and apply it citywide, which we had talked about when we were first starting, about Overlake being the precursor of a citywide expansion of how we do that. So that'll end up in Chapter 2155, and that's new. So that's going to be of considerable interest for folks. The rest of it is just going to be a lot of edits to capture the new zoning titles, right, and the new cross-references. So we didn't even bother marking them as yellow because those are going to be pretty much throughout it. There's going to be a lot of just minor edits for those zoning updates. Article 3 is actually going to see some significant changes. We're finalizing a few things right now, so this may change. But instead of having different chapters based on different locations, we're going to be reorganizing this to be based off topic. And so this will repeal 2160, and it'll repeal everything from 2162 except for Town Center. We don't want to touch Town Center at this time. We're just going to leave it. And then everything else is going to go into 2158, Citywide Design Standards. And then if we have building placement and orientation, it's just going to be in one spot. And then what we'll do is we'll have tables and illustrations that talk about where it might be slightly different in different locations for a different reason. So we're working on finalizing some of that work a little bit later. Also, in addition to just moving things around, we're trying to restructure. So within Article 1, where we have each chapter that has groupings of zones, we're trying to make them more consistent because right now they're not consistent. Each chapter is organized a little bit differently. Some similarities, but also some extreme differences, depending on what era it was written in. And so we're trying to just reorganize and make sure that each of those chapters is structured in a similar way. So you have the same information in the same order. You can read through and compare and just know exactly what to expect as you get into each chapter. So in addition to moving things around, we're also reorganizing how the information is conveyed. And so a couple of groupings that we just wanted to point out in addition to, I mentioned the new Conservation Recreation Zones. 2108, which is our current residential regulations, has a lot of everything in it. The only thing that's going to be in there after we're done is neighborhood and mixed-use developments. So that is our neighborhood residential, neighborhood multifamily, neighborhood mixed-use, corridor mixed-use, and urban mixed-use. We had a lot of conversations about, do we want all the mixed-use separate or grouping together? Because the neighborhood mixed-use kind of acts as the transition zone, and there's a lot of similarities. And just to help make it easier for people to understand the differences, what staff was proposing, we just keep this grouping together, and then just 2108 becomes neighborhood and mixed-use. So 2104 is going to get blown up. Right now, it's fairly short. It just has the use tables essentially. It's going to have significantly more than that. We've spoken several times about moving the special regulations into 2104. We've had some additional conversations about other use-related regulations with staff and with Carol, our director. And so the direction we're going in now really is every single use-related code will end up in 2104. This means home-based businesses also gets moved in. Temporary uses also gets moved in. And so those have found a place in the structure, too. There is a lot moving into 2104 that's currently in 2108, obviously you can see in here, but there's also some that are their own chapters right now, that they're not going to be a standalone chapter anymore because the chapter is 2104. So they're going to be a subset under 300. And so that's just to be aware of. It's going to have a slightly lower priority in the hierarchy, but it'll all be together. All special regulations for residential uses will be together. It's a little more complicated with the non-residential. And so as you can see from here, there's a lot of special regulations for non-residential that are currently hidden within the zoning use tables in the zones. And so they were a lot harder to find today, and so we're pulling those out and putting them in this new special use regulations. But there also are some that are their own chapter right now. So again, the same thing is pulling them all into 400, adding them in.
Go ahead, finish.
There's also several new ones, and we need to add one more to this table that we've just plugged into. We have accessory commercial, which helps displace businesses. There's food trucks and food truck courts. And then the other one that we just added.
Marymore Park overlay, was that one?
No, it was.
Not Marymore, the manufacturing.
It was an A. Sorry, there's one more. It's from active pedestrian uses.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's four new pieces that are coming in to play. And so we'll walk through all of those new pieces. But for the bulk of what you're seeing moving into 2104, it's all just relocation.
Stay there for a sec. One thing I also wanted to share is that Becky and I had an opportunity to talk with some of some code experts in the nation recently. And when we look at a list like this, we realize, gosh, we're going to run out of numbers quickly. And so what they encouraged us to do is to think about the third part of the number. So you have first your article, then you have your chapter, then you have your section. But the third part you see is a three-digit, and we have learned from our code publisher that we can expand to four digits. So here would be an example where those four digits can start to be used. And it'll be a nice implementation because if you don't need the fourth digit, you simply have a zero sitting there. So you'll start to see some of that come around with the significant changes.
But one of the benefits of doing this and moving everything into the special regulations, even though it kicks us up to a four-digit section numbering, is you can find everything instantly. Everything will have a number. And so if somebody's looking for something in the code lookups that we have moving forward, it's going to be really obvious where to find it, and it won't be hidden within a note, within a table, within a zone. Yeah, so this should make it significantly easy also in the future to add or edit the regulations and not have to worry about finding them in multiple places to update them because they will only live in one spot. And currently, right now, there are a number of them that are in four or five places, copy, paste, copy, paste. So what's moving into 2105, anything special or district or overlay is trying to move into 2105. Something came up today that might be added to this list. But again, the downtown and Marymore TOD focus areas, the Marymore Arts and Culture District. We had a public comment on the reservation for the industrial district. That is going to be happening next year. Lauren Alpert is moving forward with that. Again, because that's a county-wide district designation, there's a slightly different process that has to go through. And then we also have a noise overlay. We have a transition overlay, and we have view corridors. And so all of those things that add on or need to be looked at in addition to the project, again, just trying to make sure that people know that there is a place to look for things that might also impact their property. And several of these currently get missed, and then halfway through the process, everybody goes, oh, whoops, you might also have an additional requirement that you have to meet. So this should just be helpful from that standpoint. And so 2108 is going to see a pretty significant rebuild. So what we've done is really just made sure that your memo, and in here, too, where are things going? And if it's just getting repealed or if it's getting moved out. So we've had a lot of documents so that people who are looking at it can follow the changes. So we've, your memo really talks a lot about moving to and moving from, so we can cater that. I'm going to be putting together a website similar to our current Table of Changes website that lists everything that's currently there and then what the edit is. I'm going to have a, okay, when we're done, it'll look like this page. And so that we can have that structure put together. And then people who, again, are trying to follow the to and from, lay that out a little bit easier for them to follow. There is also a number of things that are happening in the Article 3 related to restructuring. Again, some of the state requirements on being objective. We're making sure that everything has a purpose statement. We're making sure that everything's consistent, organized. Do you want to mention, though, that a significant amount of work on the design standards are not happening in this package because it's going to take a lot longer for us to work through them? So if there is a topic in the design standard that we're not editing right now, it will get moved into the new structure, but the actual updating of it will happen next year or the year after, or in whatever code package it ends up landing in. So we're prioritizing a few things, and we're getting those done and updated, and we're making sure that we're trying to get everything in the right spot where it will live permanently if we can at all possible. But there will be some things that won't necessarily have the same look and feel because we don't have time to edit everything. Just some examples of how we're going to move towards trying to simplify, you know, using tables and charts and illustrations, lots of different ways that we can approach this. But this should also, again, make it more clear that here's the standard, and then if there is a deviation from that standard because of a specific building type or a specific zone or whatever, it would just be side by side. And so you'll be able to tell exactly where there is a change and why it might be different. So this is what it will look like when it's done. Uses and zones, Article 1. Site planning and just citywide regulations, Article 2. Design standards, Article 3. And as much as possible, everything will be only mentioned once. Lots of cross-references because people look for things in different places. So we will try to make it easier for people to go back and forth. But this should be significantly easier for people because each article now has a topic and content, and we're not switching things based off of just what number was available at the chapter when people created that chapter, which we currently have a few things like that going on. So from a timing perspective, we have another briefing. We're going to go deeper into the specific changes on zoning and uses in your next meeting, and then we'll have some in-depth, actual red line reviewing of the proposed changes. And then we're aiming for a public hearing on those zoning and uses in November. We are also going to start briefing you on the requirements and incentives in October, but we're aiming for a public hearing in December. So we've broken it up into two because there's a lot of moving parts. We figured we'd take it in chunks. It will go to council all as one package. So from an adoption standpoint, we're just doing once. But for a technical committee review and planning commission review, we've broken it into two. And again, the next meeting is going to be this level of high. We're not going to have the red lines for you to try to introduce the actual specific changes before you actually look at the red lines. We are also setting up a series of workshops. They will all be virtual, but we will be recording them and putting them online to review all of the code changes. And I will be sending out an update to the community next week, and we've got all of that built, but I've just got them all on the calendar, so they are all online right now. But we're going to be doing RSVPs in the whole nine yards over the next couple of days. So next week, I'll send out a blast to our GovDelivery, and we'll start advertising, hey, come join us for a workshop talking about the downtown code updates or the incentive program or the affordable housing work that's happening. So that will happen, and we're also setting up a series of workshops training-wise for staff as well. So that's where we're at. That is your briefing. Is there anything you want to add, Kim?
I know that in the past, we've talked about the language. So I know Becky opened with that. I just wanted to share, it's really been a great joy helping staff learn how to write code in a more accessible way. And I just wanted to point out that we use a wide variety of resources, those local and from quite far, far away as Ireland, to try to help us understand, you know, what does it take to write a publicly facing document like this that everyone can read, but also that can be easily translated? So that is a feature of our code that it can be translated. And it was quite interesting to think about the word choices. We have, you know, just common language that we use all the time in the industry, you know, planning language, but then how to think about telling that story for everyone to be able to understand that. So that is an effort that we made, and we certainly welcome more improvements to that. Right now, we have five different resources that we are using. Pull them all together into one collection so that staff can look up, you know, whether they use a certain term. And if they look that up and it says, don't use this, there's always an alternative available for them to use. So yes, if you notice anything, please let us know. We're happy to make changes. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or anything that we can help dive deeper?
Do you want to set up a matrix, or do you just want to do Q and A at this point? For today, if we could just do Q and A, that'd be good because it's really super high level. But. But we can start a matrix at your next meeting.
Great. Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you, Chair. This is great. I think, I like the idea of trying to get this translated. I think that's the direction eventually that we want to go to. I think this is, it's going to be interesting to see all this, so I'm excited. I had a couple of questions, but I'll go with the first one. Neighborhood commercial, where does that fall? Is it falling in 2104? Or is it in Article II? Or like, where would it kind of fall into?
So it depends on how it's being implemented. So we're creating a brand-new zone, right? So neighborhood mixed use. So that will be a part of 2108.
Okay.
And then the uses are actually in 2104, right? So the tables within 2104 will be updated with allowed uses. We're also updating home-based business code as well. And to let you know, we're doing it incrementally, again, just because there's only so many things that can be done at one time. So there's some work that's happening in this package. And then there will be some work that will continue future on. Kim and Philly in the economic development have future stages of work for small business support and all of that kind of work that's happening. We want to rewrite the home-based business and really blow it out and expand it. It's beyond the scope of what we can accommodate this time around. So it's going to be a little bit in 2104, a little bit in 2108, and a little bit in the next cycle.
I just wanted to know that it has a placeholder in that home. Because I know it's new and everything, but it's something that I think everybody's kind of excited about, definitely. So, yeah.
Yeah, the bulk of what we're doing to implement the complete neighborhood concept is going to be that new zone that we're creating. But we do also have a couple of changes in allowed uses that we're going to be working through, and it'll come to you in this package, for actually the residential zones itself to expand those uses as well. So we're looking through those things. And again, home-based businesses, we're trying to explode that out a little bit, too. So there are some code updates in here as well, you'll see. So we're tackling it kind of in three different ways.
Thank you. That's good. Vice Chair Wooddear.
As you look to clarify the, simplify the language for greater comprehension, are there plans to reduce or at least spell out the acronyms so that the broader community can understand? Things like TDR, FAR? Very common for us, but perhaps not so much for members of our community.
Yeah, we will definitely make sure, as we move forward, to try to spell out what all of those acronyms are.
Yeah.
On this slide, the TDR means Transfer Development Rights Program.
Nice. Commissioner Copely.
Yeah, I just want to echo.
Oh, Mike, please.
I want to echo. New mic here. What Aparna said, great work. 112 years of zoning code. You guys are streamlining, so well done. Two questions. The first was, you mentioned five different resources you're drawing from for best practices for the zoning code. Would you mind just sending over links to those or any kind of ways that we could look at some of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I have the list here if you'd like to hear them.
Sure.
But we can include it in the next memo. So there's a Federal Plain Language Act that we're employing, and all regulations should be moving in this direction. That's at our national level. But then in Ireland, one of the resources we found very early on, which was the simplest. And the concept is that if something is publicly facing, it needs to be easily understood. So it's from the Center for Excellence in Universal Design, and the document is Universal Accessibility of Public Documents. So any communication, it's supposed to be accessible. We're using the King County as well as the Washington Legislative Writing Standards. And then, of course, the city has its own writing standards. So we put them all together, and we came up with about a 20-page document. But it helps you, you know, if you're ever wondering, you know, how do I write this sentence? Or how do I write a list? How do I write a date? Acronyms as well. So how do I spell those out? It's all in there. So, yeah.
That's great. Thanks. And could I ask a second?
Let's just keep going around and then.
Sure.
Commissioner Coleman.
I have what I think might be a naive and super simple question. Is there a reason why the codes are numbered as they are? For example, there's not a 2101, like, there's not a 2106, 2107 in between five and eight. Like, why didn't you start at, you know, at scratch and just start there and just number as you go? I'm just curious.
What is not showing here is that there is a preface. There are some portions of the code that precede 2104. They're setting up, you know, how to use the code, some of the authorities, and what do the numbers mean? So the rest in pieces that we don't normally turn to, but they're just there to support the document as a whole.
Okay, thanks. I just wasn't sure because it's just.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
There are some skip-chapter numbers to allow for future news. Chapters two, which is like we're taking 2115 and 2155. So there are a couple of those that are in there intentionally just spacing for future. So.
Another question on voice. Are you screening for passive voice in this? Because that's a problem I've always had with Redmond code.
Yes, yes. In fact, City Council also asked us to do the same.
Lovely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Aparna. Yes, please.
Thank you. Sorry. I just had a, could you please explain what overlays?
Oh, microphone?
Oh, sorry. Could you please explain what overlays means? Like, what does it entail? Like, is it, from what you kind of briefly mentioned, it's the effect, it's like the effect on the neighboring parcels or whatever? Like, can you just give a little more explanation, please?
Sure. A zoning overlay is similar to a zoning district, except for it stacks on top of the district. Okay? So what it does is it either adds to or modifies the underlining requirements of the zone itself. So for instance, we have the transition overlay, and that says that in specific instances, you're going to have an additional setback from property lines. So the underlying code for the zone exists, and it's very clear it stays put, that is what it is. Except for if you're also in these overlay areas and you have these specific circumstances, you're going to have slightly different regulations that you have to comply with. So they stack on top of each other.
So we would, they would have to comply with both sets of regulations?
The most restrictive, yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Copely, are you still interested?
Yes. Section 2120, how much of that section was an effort to comply with state law and how much of that was actually proactive work done on, you know, behalf of city efforts and things outside the requirements of state law?
2120 has existed for quite a while. There has been some form of inclusionary zoning going back to the early 90s. The city of Redmond has always been a leader in housing equity. So the majority of that was not related to, you know, any specific state legislation, but rather a realization of local priorities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aparna.
I just wanted to follow up with, on David's comment, public comment, on the Southeast Manufacturing District over potentially the CARA 1. So would the CARA 1 be like an overlay zoning? Or is it like, because it's a special district, so I'm not, like, how do we make sure that it's not sitting over that?
So they are going to exist at the same time because the CARA is actually a part of the Critical Area Regulations. So they don't act as an overlay in the same way. The Critical. Yes and no. They still do all apply. All of our Critical Area Regulations apply no matter what. And they limit what you can do. If the zone says you can do X-Way and Z Development Standards, but the development regulation butts up against a Critical Area Regulation, the Critical Regulation wins. Right? So they operate in a slightly different function. The center is actually going to be something that operates similar to how we do Marymore Village Center. Like, there's a defined area, and then there are different things that are allowed or restricted within that area because it's within the center. However, the underlining zoning is still going to be manufacturing or industry or those types of things. The center is being adopted to add additional restrictions to make sure that we don't move housing into that area. Right? So that's one of the biggest purposes for creating that center. And so the actual creation of the center in 2105 is going to be a map. And it's going to not be much more than that. There might be a few other things that go in there that craft for us. Okay, there might be some things you need to look at over in this section of code or that section of code. But that is exactly what 2105 is right now. We've adopted the intercultural district as a map in 2105, defining the location. But the underlining zoning for that intercultural area is Overlake Village, right? So the Overlake Village Zone is what rules and regulates.
Just to clarify, if something was in the special district of the Southeast Manufacturing District, and it was subject to the CARA regulations, the pecking order would be that the CARA regulations have to be adhered to no matter what. Then whatever is left over, you, in terms of what is possible, whatever's left over as possibilities can be attempted. Is that the right understanding?
Yeah, I think that's close. So if you think of, you know, you have your district, your zoning district. So that's big. You also have your CARAs, and that's big. There are places where your zoning district is not going to overlay with your CARA. Your CARA is also going to be in other zoning districts, too. So the two happen at the same time. And where they do happen at the same time, you start with the Critical Area Regulations. Start there. Because what you want to do on that land might not be allowed, even though over there in the zoning district, it would be allowed.
Yeah. The way it's structured is a little bit different than a typical overlay would be because Critical Area Regulations just have a different function. So it limits what you can do in those areas, provides additional regulations and restrictions for different types of development that may only need to be adhered to in the CARA for the very specific reason of protecting the CARA. Same thing with the wetland. There might be some very specific wetland protection regulations that are, don't apply anywhere except for in those because of that very specific purpose.
Maybe one more, and then we'll keep it moving around.
Thank you. So why would we have the CARA and something which is potentially not permissible in the CARA region? So why would we draw a map of the manufacturing district which might overlap with the CARA?
Okay, so let me clarify again. When we did the Southeast Redmond Industrial District, we are not changing the underlining zoning or allowed uses. They're staying the exact same they are today. Okay? So if it's allowed today, or if it's not allowed today, that is not being proposed to change. The center is there specifically to make sure that we're protecting businesses that are currently there, that are allowed to be there, to reduce pressure for them to redevelop to some other non-job-related use. So the zoning is not being proposed to change. The uses in that zone are not being proposed to change.
Okay. Finally, got it. Thank you.
So similar topic, but related, or but different. So when you're looking at the non-residential use cases that are identified in the table, is there a plan to go through and reevaluate what new use cases have popped up? So the public comment tonight was kind of amazing because we had aerospace, pharmaceutical, batteries, geothermal. Those are four great use cases that I would love to see in a table like this. Is there any plan to actually, because a lot of the use cases seem like historically what's been important, or like big topic conversations in Redmond. But it does seem like there are some uses now that aren't really covered.
One of the goals that we did have when we started to adjust land uses about five or so years ago is to broaden them to be more supportive of businesses. Prior to that, what would happen is that we had a very specific list. And these are the lists, these are the uses that could be in Redmond. And when a use came in that wasn't on the list, we had to say no. So we didn't, we wanted to be more supportive of business. Now, by doing that, it has the potential of allowing a business to come into the city or into a location that would not be allowed because of certain conditions. So it's always a balancing act between, you know, what can happen and what cannot happen. But staff, for various reasons, so staff in utilities, staff in land use, staff in, let's think of another one, transportation. They all have certain restrictions that they use when reviewing an application. And it doesn't say that that use might not be allowed tomorrow in another location, but based on a specific site, you know, these filters that it must go through, it ends up canceling it out. So it's a conversation we actually have quite frequently with businesses who are, they're just doing their due diligence, trying to find a location for a specific type of activity. And sometimes we do need to say no.
Oh, I completely understand that. It was mostly just the clarity of being able to look something up and say, oh, like, the places you could conceivably locate are in these zones if you're trying to do this application.
Yes, and we do do that. We do, we try to do that. When someone calls us to locate a business here, there are certain key questions. And we work with one Redmond quite frequently for this purpose. So we ask them certain key questions, including like, what is the size of the building that you're looking for? Because one Redmond can actually help them locate. If they fit into a zone, they can also determine whether there's a floor area available within that zone that they might be able to lease or purchase. So, yeah, it's just a frequent kind of analysis that we do need to take any allowed, or any use, any proposed use through.
I would also like to clarify, too, that we're not regulating use based off what industry they're in. It's the actual activity. So aerospace engineering, manufacturing, they're manufacturing. So it's the manufacturing activity that is the regulation, not the industry that it's in, if that makes sense. So we wouldn't look for aerospace on our list because what about the aerospace activity is actually occurring on that property? It could be really heavy industry, and well, that's not allowed in Redmond. Right? So it's very much a very specific to the activity, not the industry.
Something like geothermal, though, might be something to reconsider on that because that's been popping up a fair amount recently because it's, people view it as a sustainability solution. And I just.
Geothermal's not a use, though. Geothermal is.
Utility.
Yeah, it's a utility. So we have regulations in the code that says if you want to do geothermal, you know, this is how you would do it. This is where it's allowed, but this is where it might not be allowed, or where you might have different regulations. And in the CARA, you would have slightly different regulations for geothermal, but it is still allowed. And so that level of activity isn't necessarily regulated as a use.
Great. Thank you.
And geothermal is in the CARA regulations, by the way.
Right.
It's listed as, if you are doing geothermal, here are the things you need to do to mitigate risk.
I was more wondering if it made sense to add it to the tables, but we can continue this topic. I was just, I was wondering if there was a short answer, and it sounds like it's more of a conversation.
What Commissioner Aparna was referencing is a list that we have, we obtained from the state. So we want to make sure that we remain consistent with the state in that regard, and that's in the Critical Area Regulations. If there is something that is simply not allowed, there's no way that we could ever have it be in the city, and it's, you know, that broad use, I don't know what that would be, but, you know, maybe it's a roller skating rink, just to give an example. So we can't do roller skating rings anywhere in the city, then that would be the level of information we could add to the zoning table. It would be a limitation on that particular use. But if it's allowed, you know, in. But if it's allowed, you know, in, like, a utility, it could be site-specific. And so we would still want to refer back to that state list, make sure we're consistent there.
Lovely.
And the other reason why it might pop up actually on the use tables or in the special regulations would be if somebody was proposing like a neighborhood-level utility, or something like, they wanted a neighborhood solar, or something like that. So that would be something that would end up taking up, and that would be the use on that property, and that would be the only use on that property. We would want to make sure that that's regulated somewhere in the table, and we do have local utilities actually as a row. And so that's where it would show up in 2104 somewhere. But if it's just how they're constructing it, it wouldn't show up in 2104.
Got it, thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Coleman.
I don't know if we're going to this, when we get into the details further down the line, but I'm curious about the, where, I'm looking and trying to understand things like home-based business, if someone's renting for an Airbnb, is that home-based business? And there's sort of, you know, there's 2104-100, which is residential and lodging use table, there's general provisions. There's 208340, which is home-based business for residential, and then there's like bed and breakfast. I'm confused as to where that sits and how to think about that.
So within the home-based business section of code, it actually tells you if this activity can qualify as a home-based business or if it needs to be a standalone. So there, for instance, childcare, different levels of childcare, some are home-based businesses and some aren't. So actually, within that section of code, it tells you, and it's more specific. And actually, we're going to potentially rewrite that whole section of code, not in this package, but in a future package that will also help with clarifying that. But we're trying to be a little bit more clear on if somebody wants to do something. There are certain instances where it will not qualify as a home-based business. It needs to qualify as a full-on, that is the use.
Just a follow-up, if I can. And so when you think about rental versus, you know, sort of, again, like a daily or weekly Airbnb, how will that show up here? Where would that, would those two things come in the same place, or would they be in different places?
Variety, variety, because an Airbnb and a rental can happen in different forms. They could be a detached accessory dwelling unit, an attached accessory dwelling unit, a space within your home, a room. So you're going to see that reflected in different ways. But one of the things that we were preempted on with the rental, in fact, is that we have to make sure that we're supportive and don't have certain requirements. So there had been a section that we needed to touch, and that was removal of an ownership requirement for them to be onsite, living, residing onsite. So that was something that the state law came through recently on, yeah. So we can point that out where those changes are.
I think it's something which people have, I know, have maybe self-concerns around.
One thing that I'm thinking on that one in particular, actually, there've been a couple here where I really want these to get in the issues matrix because they're such good questions. So we can ask them tonight, but I really want those to be captured in our discussion. So if you can bring that back when we set up the matrix, that'd be excellent.
Once we get down to the specifics of what's being edited to, and you see the actual red lines, I think that will help, because it'll clarify a few things, and then you can say, look, I really think we need to make X, Y, and Z edit that's not showing up here, too. We can go to, you know, get to that level.
I have a structural question just about how this, like, how people will use this. So how much additional website support will be around the code? So are you assuming that people are coming to the code straight from a search engine, or are they coming to the code from a city website or from the property viewer map?
Yeah.
Like, how do they know what applies to them in their particular?
Yeah, so if you were to look at our zoning code today, you probably won't notice a lot of changes if you just pop it open, but you'll start to see flags. So with the change that we're seeing, the magnitude of change we're seeing, we're going to see a lot of flags. So maybe when we come back, we can do a little tour of what the code looks like today. When we went to that code, it was a significant change for us because we had a different publisher, so it was a new format. We provided some video, helpful, you know, tutorials, like, here's a new code, here's how you use it, here are some of the tools. And so maybe this will be another opportunity to help people understand, we've made significant changes, we've moved some things around, and we can record a video and help people with their navigation.
I would love that for the next packet, so that people could just engage with that at home, like, the commissioners can engage with that at home before we come in next time, because I think it's going to make it more informative. And then also, if it's clear, because right now, a lot of times when I've gotten into the code, it's been through a city website, so I have like some partial framing. But I usually, I'm one of the people who has usually like six tabs open anytime in the zoning code, because it's just a little confusing whether or not this applies to me. So I'm just curious how that will look at the end of this process.
There's a number of different things that we're working on right now, including some rather major updates to the property viewer. And so what we're, Oder Kardenas is like our GIS guru, is working really, really closely, really, really hard with our TAS department, because it's not just a GIS update, it's also our EnerGov and all of the other things that we're doing. And so there's a lot of things that are happening that will make it easier for people to jump into the specific sections that are related to them. We're also going to be doing a lot of website updates. Well, the entire code is changing, essentially. So a significant number of pages, 200-plus pages, are going to have to be updated with code references and links into specific sections of code. And there's a lot of work that we're working on to get that ready. And obviously, we're doing this in two steps, right? There's some that are going to affect January 1, and some that are going to affect in March, so, or spring. And so we're trying to be as clear as possible with what people are able to track, and so I am working really hard on brainstorming the best way to capture that so that people can understand, here's this piece that will be adopted by council on November 19, January 1 adoption. Okay, but you still also need access to all of the edits that are going to the planning commission for review and community engagement this fall, and let's not get them confused. And then we also have this, okay, when we're done, what is it going to look like? Right? And so we've kind of got these three different conversations that we need to make sure that no matter how people are entering into that conversation, they can get to what they need in a way that makes sense and is easy to understand. So that is not easy to do. So it'll take us a little while to work all of that out, but we are in the process of doing that. And we have been working on a lot of those updates for months now, actually, getting ready for it.
And I just want to, one response to that. I think it's that the transition makes a ton of, this is a very, very big project. So there are a lot of moving parts. I love, though, knowing what the end of this stage, like, the end of Redmond 2050, what the outcome is expected to be, because that really helps me work back on the sort of feedback that I'm providing on this commission.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I'm working on right now, is taking this, this is when we're done, our new zoning code structure, and trying to translate into the web version and say, okay, look, here's a link to the edits that are going to go July, January 1, here's the edits that are under review, but all of them being organized now into the new structure. But I don't want to take away our existing Table of Changes page, because it's extremely helpful for folks, too. So I'm actually going to be building a completely separate page with a structure that is like in progress, and then when we're done. So we'll have.
I think I just wanted to clarify, I'm not actually asking about the process, I just, even at a high level, like, here, if someone has the zoning code open, what else do we expect them to know about in order to use the zoning code? The map, maybe some city websites, but just trying to, to know that package is really helpful.
The Table of Changes page has been updated. Actually, let me go ahead and pull that up for you real quick. So one of the things that we have done is we have added in a link to the 2020, just the high-level stuff from a couple, so this talks about, okay, the restructuring and the new numbering and whatnot. I do need to get this updated because we have some information in this packet that we want to update it. But this lets people know where things are coming and going. I'm going to be, also be linking to this meeting's materials that have the tables, the to and from, and it's going to go on this page as well in the exact same place, you know, what is moving to and from, and then a link to that next page that says, okay, when we're done, what is it all going to look like? So all of that will be up here at the top. And then always, as we go down below, you'll be able to see all of the edits here as well.
Amazing. All right, everyone, do we have maybe one more question for tonight? And then, okay, we're going to do, just really quickly, you'll each get one more, but we're not going to do back and forth, so try to ask your whole question upfront. Commissioner Copely.
Where can I read more about the equitable public spaces and housing units? On slide 16. I see the C presentation, but I clicked it and nothing came up.
Oh, that is a part of the design standard updates. So that will come to you in about a month or so.
Okay, it's not part of the C presentation from the June 2024 workshop?
Yes, there is a lot of that online at a high level. Thank you for bringing that up. That should be a clickable link.
It was clickable for me, I got there.
I can click it.
But you can also get there if you go to our main page, Redmond 2050. Just scroll down a little bit, in the June workshops, we have the downtown regulations and the Marymore mixed use. So both of them have pieces and parts to talk about that work.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Aparna.
I just had a, maybe it's a really stupid question, but you've done a lot of really good work, and there are a lot of best practices here. So is there a way to make sure that it's codified, that all future code would adhere to this, and we don't make a mishmash of it again? Like, my thing is, if you're doing it so well and have a little wiggle room to make tweaks, but keep to the broad principles.
Yeah, so what we are creating with this update is essentially a hybrid form-based code. And that will allow, the structure is such a way that will allow us to migrate more towards form-based if we choose to do so at a later time, or more hybrid in different areas. So the structure itself will lend itself to either continuing where we're at, or, sorry, my laptop's about to die, or expanding to slightly different versions of form codes based on whatever decision that we want to do. So the form that we have today doesn't necessarily mean it's the end product, too, because it, we need, to the ability to adapt to new emerging code forms over time, too. Like, so the smart codes and form-based codes and all this is, are, been around for a couple decades now. It's nice to see it, them starting to be more ubiquitous, but we don't know what the next form of a code might be either, right? So, but we do know that we are working very, very hard to make sure that the structure that we're setting today is so simple that if somebody proposes something that's weird, or they like take a topic and move it into the wrong article, everybody will go, no, don't do that, that doesn't make any sense. We created this structure so that all of these things that are like each other exist together. And that's our whole entire context for all of this, right? All of the parking is being moved, all parking is going to be all together, open spaces, all in one spot. So the entire context of how we're rewriting the code is kind of setting itself into play in a way that if somebody deviates from that in the future, it'll be really obviously something that just doesn't fit, and people will question why somebody is proposing something that is a deviation from that structure.
All right. Commissioner Coleman, you're the last one for tonight.
My question's maybe looking ahead a little bit from a user experience, but how much are we thinking about using, people being able to use like conversational AI to interact with this versus actually having to navigate numbers, the way things are termed, whether you've got three-letter shortcuts, giving people the ability to, you know, basically ask a question in simple language and get a simple answer back?
Yeah, actually, Oder, it pops up again. We are actually looking at potentially using AI to help answer quick questions related to the code and do lookup features, or, and so that may not come into play immediately because we've got so much that we absolutely have to do. But it is one of the things that we're looking at potentially in the future to help make it just easier to get directly into what you need exactly. It's not going to work for every topic or everything, but there might be some ways that we can easily implement some of those tools.
Great, thank you, yeah. Maybe you can come back to this at some point.
Oh, we would, this is our plan for the next several weeks. So we are just going to be here enjoying the code.
Yay.
Yay.
The entire rest of the year, we're going to be coming back every meeting, talking about code.
So we're going to have a lot of time for feedback. This was like the introduction and the first taste. So I really appreciate that tonight, thank you.
And we will be really heavily focused on zones and uses, starting your next meeting. And again, we're working towards November hearing for that. So we've got a lot of study sessions and opportunities for community combat, comments and input, and the workshops that we're going to be advertising next week. So there's a lot moving forward. Staff is diligently working really hard, editing each other's work, trying to get it ready, to try to get a redline version published. But we wanted to get the, what to expect out there and get that started.
And I just want to say quickly, everyone here has now been in the code a fair amount over the last six months, so that's great. But if anyone has questions as you're starting, just about, like, if you don't feel like you're confident in the code, that is very normal. So please send them Ian's way, and then he will get it to the right person. All right, thank you so much. All right, so with that, we are going to move to staff and commissioner updates.
Thank you. So the first piece we'll talk about is our scheduling. The next few meetings going all the way through October 23 are our regular meetings, second, Wednesday, fourth Wednesday, 7:00 PM. And it is mainly going to be this show. There's going to be more of this content, so we'll be able to both dive in with some of those specific discussion matrix questions, and be able to go more piecemeal by some of the specific subset topics to help get more of an opportunity to really sink our teeth in on some of the specific changes. That is largely our content. At the 10/23 meeting, we'll also have Transportation Manager Michael Hints show up to go over the transportation plan. So just please let us know if there's any expected absences, so we can ensure that we have quorum. If we take a step back and think about kind of the broader planning commission work programming, what does it look like now that Redmond 2050 is wrapping up? A few of the pieces that are going to come up are functional plans, lots of functional plans, transportation, fire, stormwater, second phase of the general government facilities. And related to that, we will talk about how that intersects with the budget process and how it intersects with our capital investment strategy. So we'll be trying to get more of a background there. We will also have a, kind of a 101 on the annual docket process, that's coming up. We will also go over a bunch of code amendments. That could range from substantive programmatic code updates to more like odds and ends cleanup, but there will be lots of those piecemeal items coming your way in the next year. And then the last piece of update is that we are still planning to tentatively bring onboard our youth advisor. We plan to make a posting for that later this year so that they We plan to make a posting for that later this year so that they can start in Q1 of next year. So Redmond 2050 wrapping up, but the Planning Commission always stays in high gear. That's the staff update. Thank you, Chair.
All right. And then I have one update. Or, sorry, Vice Chair Woodier and I went to city council last night. So that was to represent everyone's work on the omnibus package and wrapping up 2050. And then also, we touched on water and wastewater. It was just a really nice conversation. People had great questions. If you're interested, you can go to last night's recording. We started at 8:30, so you can watch the first parts or skip right through. But it just, it was really nice to see council so engaged. And I wanted to especially pass along, every single person said thank you. I know that this has been a ton of hard work and a really heavy lift, and it is so appreciated. And it was just a really positive atmosphere last night. So I just wanted to make sure everyone received that warmth personally, because you've all done a really great job. So thank you. All right. Any other commissioner updates? All right. Well, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then we are adjourned.